Okay. Just calling to order the committee of the whole community development committee for September fifth, two thousand twenty three. Uh, all right, moving on to the approval of the agenda, uh, does anybody have any changes to the agenda they want to make?
None for me.
Do we not have any committee members by tonight?
Mr. David, okay.
Okay, um, fair enough. So I will at this point obviously take note that both our committee members, uh, Kim Martin and Dave Doby are not present and. All right, uh, any pecuniary interests or conflict of interest or the general?
None, I mean.
None, I mean, okay. Excellent, uh, and so with regards to last minutes, minutes, uh, is there any, oh, sorry, I skipped something?
Um, just.
Oh, right. On the approval of the agenda. We get to be in your dilemma and second by their, by their during day shop during major stuff, uh, all in favor? Thank you very much for that correction, uh, we talked about community interests, I assume, and, uh, all right, so moving on to business arising from previous, uh, committee meeting minutes, is there any, uh? Anything arising from that? All right, good, uh, and on to delegations and presentations of which we have one. Okay, all right, moving on to number six A, um, living land use planning. Uh, application for severance for twenty seven seventeen, I'll note at this time that, uh, County member Dave Dopey is now, uh, can we go into the seat? All right, so, uh, application for severance for twenty seven seventeen goes in row.
Then the check, so we have the, um, for owners of the top line, it's during, um, that was designated. So welcome, the time to see the seventh application for the property, uh, twenty seven of the same living road, uh, in those houses though, property in a, a pocket, they went from six one acres and fell on the inside with the single well, by the side of well and separate. The application proposed is a new point eight acre lot with about thirty six years of running of the new well or future dwelling. So there was a tiny lot with standing acres, standing, uh, single dwelling, well, it can suck the structure from the suburbs, but a lot of, um, again, so point eight acres, we bring it here in the market, um, and there is a minimum of a good in that lot. So it shows that the parcel once maintained two, that the first plan divided with north and south law, rural and northern, that part is not going to grow. Um, although it seems worse, she title as the man's under the same ownership. Uh, apparently she offers the owner completely prior to the law and definitely so that whole parcel is ready to be broken. This is only one parcel of this today, all of one, uh, severance created new lot with a cheap and stable. So this application, you were prepared for this application back in July, it was on the agenda, just, um, um. Not long before the meeting, we, these comments from the Sensibility Cultural Society is a neighbor to this lot, um, the revenue application. And the A cultural society reference agreement ended to the previous property owner in two thousand five, um, and they share concerns that how those severance will affect the strength of the agreement. Uh, you can say that it already advised that the application would be helped until the application sort of issues. And until the Sensibility Cultural Society, um, satisfied them could withdraw their concerns. So since then, the applicants were directly made the Sensibility Cultural Society to resolve those concerns. And intention of offers to the property was advised that the, uh, Sensibility Cultural Society has no outstanding concern related to this other application. So the correspondence, um, is included in the agenda package, but you know that the, um, the concerns are involved. Um. The initial analysis of the seed on high servicing in southern areas is known to allow for in building and monitoring health of the history development, provided that site conditions are suitable for the long term provision of set services with no negative impacts. So the option is provided at high level of consent and three announcements prepared by an authority associate, um, that was committed in the application. The report, um, provided recommendations for Chirrell and some of the, I think, anti-steroid on the severed law. And requires until the people thought in terms of the current theories doing this in order to spread any adverse impacts on groundwater resources in the size area. Um, and we still have any man's recommendations in, uh, making sure owners aware of our findings through the development agreement registered to property titles. Staff represented that in development agreement, um, be one of the conditions on severance, but people who becomes grant the severance. Um, in regards to the lot size, in his own file, the new from lot size, just in the zone in the residential second bench console is zero point four hectare where private servicing is proposed. So both the severance and routine personal are, um, proposed an undersized lot, maybe zero point three, a little over zero point eight here. Um, so in addition to zoning by law, could be a key to allow a undersized lots here. The, um, the severance application notes that per could allow for a single dwelling on the severed lot. Um, and that is permitted in the residential second bench to be zoned, but the zone also, um, permits semi-passed duplex dwelling, so those who could work considered in the hydrological terrain investment. So we do a zoning by law amendment, um. The zone could propose several lot, so there is strictly in the residential use to a single dwelling unless, uh, the applicant were to provide, uh, uh, an administrative letter from their hydrogeologist, um, to say that the, the new lot could be a property service person, you have core device showing, but I don't think it's the reason about the, uh, we should explain for the single blocks, it seems like it's supposed to be. Um, so we have a recommendation here, uh, staff recommend that maybe recommend, um, in favor of severance, um, conditional upon course of development in the town is over there.
Okay. Any comments, questions?
Uh, thank you, uh, the recommendation for the, uh, hydrological assessment and train analysts, what's that train, what's that really do? Is it the same company that can do that? The, uh, hydrological assessment?
Yeah, so the, yeah, we've done that work already with already associated. And it has some power to the hydrogeology of them and the training. So hydrogeology, uh, I understand I'm wanting to do it the well water, uh, quality and quantity, which in the assessment, it's in the agenda package, and that's fine, but it'll be necessary. Um, the train now is going to look at, um, uh, any adverse impacts from the system to, uh, some of the problems.
So really the, um, hydrological assessment is probably the same thing that the well drill is gonna give you, so many, so many gallons of water per minute and, uh, make sure they'll save the grid, no? I'm just trying to get away from this, from, as I call it, red tape, like, i- is it expensive for this hydrological assessment?
There is, well, you have a discussion on the hydro, like, it comes up, um, later on, talk a bit about the hydrological assessments themselves, anyone if you want, there's a letter that's attached and, uh, it's under section, what is it, under the section? Is it in section three, is that what that is? It's in section three, okay, so we can, that discussion, if you want.
Okay, I just, yeah, I'll leave it that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yeah. But one of the reasons is because the lot is, is, uh, small, right? It doesn't need qualifications and official plan.
The official plan must say that, uh, lot size could be reduced, uh, in certain circumstances, on the basis of itself in this area. The zoning by law requires people within the festival so in this area that are concerned with lots means zero point four hectares, which is one acre. So the, the lot size that figured the hydrogeology of the three hours is very.
Okay, no, I'm fine. So that, so it's saying that, I'm going, my, that's required?
Lot size.
No, you do not. So that's the top of identity study anyway. The official plan is for undersized lots.
Sorry, our, our official plan does allow us.
You can do, you can, like I said again, and, and I mean, I think there's also virtual standards in play as well. Um, so any other questions, then, just one quick one? Yep, I, I, it's, it's regarding this, but I don't think it can help in this one, so, so the way that I see the, um, thank you for the report, too. Um, the, the original, uh, well, it's one lot now, but it was originally two lots, right? One and two, and they, they sort of stacked north and south, one was landlocked, and the attempt is, is to make an east, east-west, but they were deemed together to make one.
Correct.
In cases like that, do folks find who find themselves trying to sever now, this one isn't severing back to its original state, it's changing, that's why I understand why there's, was fees and adjustments, but is there a mechanism or consideration for owners that, that find themselves in deemed positions that want to have one severed back out? I know it doesn't apply directly to this, but.
I think we would have done a lot more, you're not going to adjust, which is, I think, also, if, if you had found that the person had not reached, and so if that was more than so, maybe we could actually, we were creating a new policy. But we would have done a lot of, and this is another type of severance.
Yeah. I was just wondering about fees as well, right, because there's a cost associated with severance, something that was already re-severing, something that was already severed.
Right, because he was in the seat.
So, so if, if the applicant this time was trying to go back to the way that it originally was, and it got deemed together to no fault of their own, there'd still be a fee to them to get it back to its original status, there's no mechanism or consideration for that.
There may be another mechanism through, uh, a lawyer, maybe it was something like that, but it's not, I would be able to imply.
If I can speak to that through the chair, we had the same situation when we bought a lot next door, it became joined with title, and man, I really feel for him. It's, it's a process, and no, there's no cheap way out, it's basically, it's all forgotten.
We find that's allow us to leave an application, and it also, it was going to be unreasonable to buy that piece, so our, here, the seventh application is five hundred dollars, it's a small piece of that piece, but we, we would have the ability to, wouldn't hurt.
Believe when we did that, yeah, it was something even on this, uh, in this session, I guess, I didn't do that once, but.
Any idea what I have to do, step across? Yes, yes.
It's, it depends on a lot of circumstances, like how, how large is the area that you will be studying for, um, there, they may be known well, wondering to be known, maybe able to use a name as, uh, that needs a certain criteria, uh, for the assessment, so, I mean, it could be two one to five hundred dollars, but then the cost of knowing well, maybe most of the will have to do a good, re-freeze the law a bit.
And I'm gonna say again, this is the discussion. So the chair, I'll, to the chair, I'll move the recommendation as a third.
I'll second it. All right, uh, so we move her a second here, do we have any other comments? Okay, all in favor? Okay. Okay, moving on to number six A two, application for zoning by law amendment two zero eight for Dundas Street, Zenith Road Incorporated, on behalf of CFT Group.
Okay, so in this case, I'm just looking for, um, uh, direction to schedule a public meeting for the package, I don't care if it's clear in my report there, so it's funny, there, I need to schedule a public meeting here. Um, so the application for zoning by law amendment at twenty eight for Dundas Street, um, it's main street commercial, uh, property, it's developed with mixed use buildings, and these residential units on the ground were left touching one to our main size. Um, in the main street commercials, um, uh, residential developments are not, uh, permitted on the main floor, so they're, um, seeking a, and the tip is only about to allow more, um, to be expanded on the, for, rather, rather, possibly legal performing size. Um. So in the agenda package, uh, no prepared, uh, earlier approach is summary of the application, standard plan just to remind us they're planning up now as the open, um, agenda, right, for this all. So the planning act of fires, at least one other meeting is now, this is getting a public action to make representation in standard scope of the proposed by law. And also requires a staff to see your different committees, so with the public meeting, uh, staff recommendation, we start moving direct staff to receive this kind of a public meeting in regards to some by law and the competition for the public for that.
Much, this is one, one other question to develop coordinate, and therefore, I understand that this is just a scheduled public meeting, so the conversation will be brief, but, um, we, um, uh, will have this item back for, for discussion post that meeting, correct? Okay, I'll move the recommendation.
And is it thirty day delay after this public meeting? Two, two?
Once of, uh, when scheduled public meeting, when we find the department, some people, one is, you know, as we are, as we were on the newspaper, and we now notice that any resident, um, uh, probably one of them, but any meetings, other whole people. And, um, we will have a meeting, um, council will make a decision after a meeting, we break out and see, so we, and then it's council.
I'll move, I'll second. Well, that's actually a bit second if I can't stay around. Um, okay, fair enough. No, we, no, okay, uh, well, as I said, uh, we have a second here, did you get the move in the second, but, got that? Okay, sorry, moved by, uh, the mayor and seconded by Councilor. Uh, so, uh, that's what, I'll do a vote, all in favor? Okay, now moving on to number six three, consent policy review, and, uh, I should have added earlier, I apologize, but we have, uh, our, our planners, uh, from Nova Tech, uh, Mr. Steve Pence, and Jordan Jackson here with us today as well, so, thank you very much. You're gonna, you're gonna be in the direction, yeah, that's great, I just wanted to make sure that it was.
Well, I'll time to hear from, from those that page, uh, the few items to the agenda package, uh, in addition to all the work that it was, and that's why, if you don't mind, just, if you're, it's funny, but what's the agenda package, right? Um, I'm glad we have our, it's good one, those that, um, have some contact with. So, um, actually, at the April, uh, the the development meeting, members requested a report in the commission reverting official plan and zoning by law policy, uh, related to events in the rural area, and the report was prepared by Nova Tech and the committee in June. And that provides conditional contacts and suggestions for inspiration related to each of the changes committee had identified. And then following that, the second in June, committee requested that a draft amendment be prepared for pre-consultation with counties. Um, and that's what we brought, uh, here tonight, so there's three important reports in the agenda package, I just want to highlight. First is, um, a letter from a hydrogeologist, JP two G, um, and I included this in the agenda package, because at the true meeting, there was a lot of discussion and debate about the necessity of hydrogeological assessment and training now for, um, for severance applications, and we didn't have hydrogeologists here at the meeting to completely discuss it, so I have a lot of questions, some of the people left unanswered. Um, so I reached out to, um, senior hydrogeologist JP two G, and I accessed some information on hydrogeology, hydrological assessment, uh, to be related to lot creation. So the, um, the letter information provided by, um, by the hydrogeologist included in the agenda package for the committee's information. Next, we have, uh, a lot of work done by Nova Tech, since they were not here with us. Um, based on some preliminary discussion with counties, they, they go in, they've definitely, and, uh, they reviewed the overall policy we have, um, and, uh, found that it, it doesn't look like all of the genes that are recommended by the committee can be supported with proper planning justification. So they prepared the, uh, the amendment as the committee had directed with the, um, with the policy changes that were reflected. They've also prepared recommendations, maybe that they feel could be supported with proper planning justification. Um, so the committee will have two amendments to take a look at tonight, um, and, uh, and direct staff with next steps, um, based on the, the stuff they need to do tonight, so, uh, next, we also have, uh, a report that was prepared by the county's planning staff, and this was prepared for their planning advisory committee. They'll actually be on the agenda for tomorrow as a planning advisory committee meeting, um. They prepared this report because they, um, received some inquiries from other counties, and asked as well about the management limits, and, um, their report notes that all of the shipment applications will only be considered when they can be supported by planning justification, and when required, supporting information and studies are provided. So I wanted to make the committee aware of that report, and I need to be on that as we, um, go into the session, so it's tonight. So there's staff recommendation here, staff recommend the committee endorse amendment number two that was prepared by, by anyone. But, uh, we can join in here, Nova Tech, and I'll answer some, some questions following word.
Okay. All right. All right, we're just starting with this one, are we? Are we having any questions, voters, to start out?
I have one, I guess, Mr. President, uh, to the CDC, so, um, for tomorrow's discussion, for, for the changes to that, there are, um, I think it's Rita Lakes has, has this already in place, and it doesn't have, to my knowledge, it doesn't have these requirements, you know, to it. Is the suggestion that, that tomorrow's meeting, I mean, we don't know the outcome of that discussion yet, um.
Because we're, right, tomorrow's discussion being, so we get, you know, like county's council, so, or, lending, the planning committee meeting tomorrow on first thing. Um, is that they won't approve anything without a hydrological assessment, is that, is that a suggestion? That's what I heard, so.
No, sorry, so, um, the county system, who are already for our mission brand, and that's in the application, the county's, maybe, the, the, for the kind of, you can follow changes. Um, what means we're talking with most of the counties, and all that, some of the sufficient required, the part that is needed to provide that information with reports of study. Members required for them to make an informed decision on our application, uh, for the mission plan limits. So, but, um, uh, Ms. Mills' report that, um, is that planning rationale has always been required in, probably in two thousand and sixteen, and that's still required, so we need to be able to back up whatever else changes we, um, are going to see for, we found the planning rationale justification. Um, and, uh, we, we got that, it's not.
Right. And so, so the committee, uh, the planning committee that meets tomorrow, right, it's made up of the mayor, so I'm not correct, and other members of the community, and they'll make the decisions on on that, am I right in thinking that?
Sorry, I don't, I don't, if I can comment, just on running off, I'm not sure.
Like, Sherry doesn't make the, the ultimate decision, she, she just brings forward a recommendation to me, right? And the committee debates it and, and makes the decision.
Through the chair, her report is for information only, so there is a recommendation in her report, she's just simply providing this information to know, I know that it's relevant to our discussion tonight, it's not of the last in the.
Right.
Right.
Right, it's, but it suggests that we're going to need hydrological assessment based on on proper planning or, or on planning. Like, um, I know that ours suggests that we approve recommendation two. It sounds that the reason that recommendation two has been put forth is because the county's planner has the ultimate final say. The planning committee is the one that takes or gives direction at a planning committee, right?
Let's say to chair, and, 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 uh, Nova Tech, to live it with, uh, and to, uh, put forward, because, now, to, uh,
Run a board. I get what, I get, I get what that's for. My concern is that if we're making a decision based on information that the United Counties is only going to approve number two, because that's what the planners have recommended. Even if we decide to go a different direction, uh, there's no guarantee that it'll fail or pass at, at the committee level at United Counties. Right?
Uh, the, the chair, we would not know that to come, I'll be concerned, say, at this time, is the, the thing can, as it is, but now, for that, the floor, which means that it hasn't, uh, planning justification, we can see that, uh, coming forward with, with the type of condition, it's not, uh, we not.
And, and so if, if we put through recommendation one, right, this is, I think that was sort of the, the committee's direction. And it went to United Counties, they would send us, send it, send it back to us with what they believe would, would be a response, right? Like, if they wanted hydrological study or assessment at it, they would send, they would say, no, it's a deny, they would send it back.
I think what they would say is, you need problem justification, not planning rationale to support your application. We would never, never want, we don't have, probably, just planning rationale, and that's the agent and supporter of the. So I, I, I think that, either way, they would never, never want, or want it to survive.
Okay, so, just so that I'm right on, like, that I've got this right, so we just talked about on, on item one, a lot that if it was point four, wouldn't have had to have had a hydrological or terrain assessment. And now we're saying that because we want to move it from one hectare to point four, we have to have it. Right, the reason the hydrological assessment was required on application, we discussed on number one, was because it was point three. If it was point four, it wouldn't have had to have happened, right? And now we're putting in something that says it has to happen, that's, I'm struggling with it.
Don't know about it, to hide it too much, because it definitely not the happening for the point four hectares. The ministry by lines say that if it's under one hectare, I'd service name, but it's a hundred, that was, it would be typically asked for that, I don't know that I would have noticed the trigger to ask for that, but wasn't it, if I watch, should be asked for it, or problem, yes.
Could that, could I have a little, could I ask, can I have Steve maybe give us a little talk on that, please, if, if you don't mind?
Yeah, I was trying to get your attention, and so I wanted to ask, try and help, um. There's a couple of different issues here at the player. Uh, one is, that seems to be the primary of, of the community, which has a geological assessment and training analysis. The second is, your interest in, in making your official plan to allow for more block, things in the rural area. And so there, there's sort of, there's, there's two different issues. And to, to do an official plan amendment to enable more lock creation, you, you ask for a bunch of different things, one was to reduce the lobby area, uh, which, one was to change the date, and one was to allow, uh, the size. So that requires an official plan amendment. In which there is a report, the secret, the county planner's report, it's being serious, what are the information requirements that the county will look for in order to be able to um, consider the amendment at the local level? And what she's speaking to in this case will be, uh, justification for the amendment. It has nothing to do with the hydrogeology, the training analysis, it has to do with the justification for amending the official plan. So we prepared two amendments, one was an amendment that does exactly what the committee asked us to do. But in order for that amendment to work internally, so that we don't create an inconsistency in your policies, we had to incorporate a couple of other amendments, that there was more or less still not a standing process to try and, um, make things work, but you have that in property, be inserted in your plan. Second amendment we did was one that we feel is your best chance of getting an approval. And with that is based on is our lot creation and, um, lots of flying analysis of stuff that we did, to determine this or a flying. And with that is based on is our lot creation and. Um, lots of flying analysis of stuff that we did to determine this or a plan that's creating a bit of a lot, but in amending your official plan. And so in light of that report, we prepared amendment two, which we think a balanced storage trust of creating. Inverging loss supply, we've also um. It's justified on basis of our analysis, and we've also incorporated some amendments. To deal with the hydrogeology consideration, to try and deal with that issue more directly. We know from the bottom of the county that is something that the county is going to be looking for very closely if they're going to consider this amendment. So we've put forward amendment number two in your best interest. In obtaining an amendment that will further your objectives. Amendment number one, in our opinion, does not have the support that the county is likely to accept. So, so that's why there's two amendments, and that's why I remember the chair's report or your county planner's report. It seems specifically to information and promise for an official plan, not information to a sovereign's application. So that is helpful to establish the two different issues.
You know, I started to read with this material on on Friday. And I started to read the information that was sent by. For G to G consultant. And I only read it to a certain point, and then I stopped, and the point was. Although hydrogeological geological studies are not normally required. Consent to several applications, so in my little head. I I read that as hydroge studies are not required for single servants. Am I reading it wrong? Normally, what does normally mean in planning? I just, and and. Steven, you've done a lot of official plans for municipal power, you've made a grand sum. And I have, I cannot find one of those official plans that have the hydro geological study. Or you, it's it's like me, it's like, it's backwards, something's not quite right. Like, they haven't, if the if the lot is undersized for a hydroge, which I understand in my head, you know. But in this case, if we're moving it to one acre, you're telling, if you have less than a hectare, then you have to have a hydroge study. That doesn't make sense. It just doesn't make sense, can you show me one of the official plans that has that that line? And any other official plans?
Or is is that in the P P S, by the way, I thought I remember something about that was a provincial policy statement about.
They have guidelines as well, interesting base, yes. And all our official plans have policies that allow for us to ask for hydrogeology studies for severance. In this case, where we're giving them a lot sign, so normally we can use it down to an acre, one to point four. We are recommending that that be supported by hydro geological study. The policy of already in the plan that could maybe be to ask for that, we're just bringing forward the more upfront. Because with acres, lots of plant. Or definitely lot creation and smaller lots, there is a greater potential for cumulative impacts. And I recognize script line to ensure that we're looking at the public health and safety of the area. But all our plans have similar policies, we're we're the same, and nor should they be the same. But but we do stand by that recommendation.
So so is that, is is that qualification that we're going to fill through any policy, any I carry a policy?
There is a policy of of profits to ensure that. Groundwater is protected, and there's probably safety policies to repeat this. And by creating lots, we want to make sure that we're not creating lots, going to. Suitable groundwater supply quantity, and negative impacts on downstream or adjacent properties that might be impacted by.
And and to add context to that. If we didn't ask for a study for a one acre lot, for instance, and something went wrong. Where does the liability fall on that, does that fall on the township, because the decision was made to allow the hydrological study, or is that? Just that, I don't know if there are implications of that, I just. We're stewards of the township, right, so.
So I'm not sure how to answer that, it's probably a difficult problem, but. Our responsibility is to to under considering planning applications, the new response for decision, the territory.
Yes, your chairman. You want to know whether we're responsible, would be responsible if something went wrong with an acre lot. You know how many acre lots have been severed in needs and grand law? But and it's such an an um an addendum to it. Thousands. Think of it as well as you're going to be responsible for. I just don't see it, I don't see it, I see it, I see if the one acre lot. If it's not a one acre lot, if it's less than the one acre than a hydroge. But not the way you've ever worded there, that doesn't make sense to me, yes, we'll give you, we'll give you an acre. Change to an acre lot, but. If it's less than a the hectare, you've got to have a high rate instead. If you could just tell me some of the official passes or things like that, because I might like really look that up.
Well, we'll be part of that after.
I don't, I don't think it's there, I don't think that lies anywhere in any of the other nine challenges within these areas. I'm sorry.
It would be trending towards.
But I don't think it's there, and my training would be, so I'm wanting to. That's not going to answer.
Mr. W is our question. I mean, you asked a question, I think they can't answer right now, it's fair. You know, I I just don't see how we're gonna get to an answer, uh whatever we're expecting to go with an answer, I don't just. It'll be a research project of one.
Supposedly, the the middle ground would be a variation of a hundred and two. Um, to. Um, I don't know. I mean, probably be saying, and box that more, and see what you can do about it. However, that to satisfy an interest, but but I do stand by the fact that. Hydrogeology reports should be, should be um required to support a lot creation, to bring that over to a side. And um it's a trend moving towards that, a lot of municipalities that used to on share or doing it, a lot of them haven't done it, so starting to do it. And it's sort of matter of time to everybody who's doing it, unless not much you like here, if you talk about offline.
No, I I see, don't get me wrong, it's not what I want to hear, I just want to know. Do we have to do it? The way you do it, do we have to do it, is that provincial policy is, somebody's policy does. And I'm not going to define it, but if you can show me. You, you know, I'm not.
The guidelines that were that were included in the uh amendment from J P two G that said they had the. Possible P five, P four guidelines. And those speak to the prevention requirements, and those are the legal law, and so. Yeah, maybe you could have gotten an amendment that doesn't have a hydrogeology as part of number two, the number two.
But but see, whatever I need from J P two G. Uh, it tells me right here that normally they're not required on single servants.
Yeah, personally, I don't understand that.
Well, what does normally mean, it's not, it's mean normally if he if if the if the mayor wants a server one, but couldn't be different if the deputy mayor wants this server one?
If if I read that, you didn't read.
And I exposed a little bit taken by that comment, I'm not sure what the potential were. The plan again is that under a half area or under a point eight river, that's that they are.
And how long do you think that's been enforced?
Those would be five guidelines in fourteen fourteen.
At the nine? Interesting.
Yeah, and it's 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 uh it is, it is uh something that I had had a chat with uh with the. Uh development coordinator at prior to this meeting, and I would, you know, depending on how this meeting went, there was some context, you know. Should be entertained seeing what we could have, uh you know, our hydro, hydro geologists, I guess, uh come for delegations. We can have a broader discussion on that, I think, I I'm not sure that's the answer yet, but I feel like we're talking. An awful lot of other than maybe that would be not a bad idea to have an expert if we could.
Steven, what is your last official plan to you or needs of grammar? You know. Now, I I have a few other questions, but I don't know whether it's for the township's back, or what's.
Okay, so.
Important point that I would like to make tonight is that um. To have an official plan amendment approved by the by the county, whether it's number number one or two. Maybe plan justification for the amendment, not on the lot creation specifically, on the amendment. And so um without the support of a lot supply analysis, we've done. Support number two, I think you're getting into a revenue with a typical United County.
Right, and I I don't do my best to chair not offer an opinion on this, to be honest, so it's a little bit of a difficult stay. Situation needing the chair for this, but you know, I part of my, you know, what what I did my readings this this weekend about it. Um, and and I think this is for context for 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 committee to think about is, you know, is it considered part of a planning rationale? I I get that it's not necessarily the dimensions or the geometry of it, well, but you know, we're we're being asked for affordable housing and and. Trying to push initiatives to try and get more housing out there further at the affordable level. Uh, as as well as we're talking about at times, and so, uh you know, while I consider justification, it may not be planning justification. Uh, that, you know, to be able to sever some lots off of a larger property will help the person selling those lots as well from a financial perspective. And it'll also have lots go cheaper, so that will allow, you know, more affordable housing to be developed, that was sort of my, you know, my my context when I was thinking about one of the things that. I think is a is a is a rationale when you start a planning rationale, it's just one for 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 thought from the committee at this point in time.
But having a a duly chaired, that's great, but to, you know, put in a hydrological. Thing, you're you're initially not helping uh. Uh, affordable housing, because you just build it up, you know, not more money, more money. To get that certified to build.
Sure, and when you say, you say you, you know, as a general, you're a super not so person.
Well, you you said that, you know, yeah, all I'm saying is, yeah, you know, it it takes away. And and affordable housing, every time, every time we keep putting stuff on Red King, I call it. To people who wants to build. It costs money. Time and money, time and money, and that's why we're here, we don't want the time and money, we want it to be. Straightforward, right?
And 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 I mean, I I believe, and I think this is where I think we should maybe see if we could get. Um, I can't remember his last name, Andrew maybe, or somebody like that, to take them and give us a consultation on hydroge study. Because my understanding is also that there are some that are easier than others, and I'm assuming easier thus means cheaper than others, if you will, for. A straightforward property, it may be a different price tag than a.
But you have. I know, but yeah, yeah, uh duly chaired, we have this report from J D stating that.
Yeah, but I think that's.
I that's again, I hate meeting someone with that. You know, having more studies, that that's that's my. My problem of 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 all this. We had, you know, a hundred and twenty days, and we're up to ninety five. You know? So we got twenty five days left. Well, it was a hundred and twenty days from the time you started on June fifth, that we should have this gone through.
Actually, it starts, it starts actually whenever everything goes to the count.
Yeah, at June, June fifth. So the hundred and twenty days is when we go to counties?
Yeah, when you send it stuff to the counties, I mean.
This has been an open discussion, so we're not going to get this through October, for sure, then. I get frustrated, very frustrating.
Mr. Chairman, I have a bit of my question. I don't know whether it's the no attack or whether it's the township, and I'm looking at the table that has all the uh. The lot supply, page uh. Fifty four. Can you tell me how you come up, and we'll just take the rural policy area, because it's number one. If you could just tell me. How how you obtain those numbers, what criteria you use to obtain those numbers? And did the township do it, or is it?
Fifty four is a nobody's current number tag. And which which period did you gain exactly, which numbers?
Page fifty four, yeah, third one, under rural policy area, three hundred and seventy nine residential, not residential.
Uh, fifty four, yeah, fifty four is page fifty five in the.
I I know you use impact to do it, but who who did that work? Is the township doing? From the county. So. So you know what, do you do you know what the uh criteria that was used for those lots?
Yeah, we. We're on the paper, it's later in the report.
I don't have the exact contact goals, but we had asked the county to compile a list of any properties in the township. Based on certain M P M P codes, which would identify whether properties considered vacant or undeveloped residential home. So using that initial mix, it was filtered down based on zombie um in the lot size. Um, whether or not we need. Yeah, other than property that's been shot publicly maintained, there was quite a bit of properties within the township. Within that M P list, but the reality is they're not eligible for building lots because they don't have.
We took all the data lots, that we understood the impact of the damage. And then we separated from that lots that we knew currently developed, because they don't have weapons, or they're all weapons, or they're. There's only a category that doesn't relate to the step in class. And that's how we got that number, we did not. Count lots and do drive by, then do a survey, and we don't have the time for that, I don't think you want to guess for that.
Like, we have a lot of games in the municipality that go from uh uh. Half lane and Mission North Ram will work to Augusta Township, it's something that. Are unmaintainable houses, and then we have some road houses that don't actually even exist, road exists, but it's a motorbike. I wondered if that was taken into consideration when they were coming in.
We've done with the lower rock, last ten.
So and so it does, it also takes into account like. Search for. But the two acre lots are two, two, two zero, you know what I mean? Or did it take into some other rural property, which now would be farm? Um, it doesn't want to take that one. Because we do a rural, if I me as rural property, and spend a million bucks on. Fixing the land out, digging uh ditches and and uh putting in pipes for for water and and then. You know, it didn't ever, it didn't know where they're like, they'll know, so I just wonder if that part of the bar is a thing of a big chance.
Would you even know that information, I don't know, yeah. No, no, I think that's something you would know, right?
Rural, I think, the first day to day start foot, and we have to find gold into it. Be rotten out, we have unfinished work, if you remember. You know, and we can check it to be not, go up and see how does that play out. We identify a few oddies that we know that sort of allow them to show up and recline our boats. Uh, we can't count us as a bit last, but we're not very hard at it.
It sounds like that, that one would be included in eight sixteen.
So the hundred acres inside of her, that would be included again.
I mean, I think. It's just statistical, but I'm assuming it's not the majority of meetings factor, you would have known that. I said, if I assume that is not the majority of lots of this eight sixteen that'd be like that, so. You know, I think that would be an exception almost potentially, but I don't know that for sure.
Do you have the ability to just check for lots that are hectare unless? Do you have that ability to do that?
Information we were given from the county, it suggests. You don't have that.
Oh, I know, that's fine. It would be nice to know that. Is it just a matter of pushing a few buttons and it comes up? Yeah, I have one more question. Stephen, you have identified that. If we go with the options of two or three or whatever. And you and and in the writings that you submitted. Uh, you have said and send them this, there is. I change that there is a good chance that, and I'm just paraphrasing, that these two acres to this. Hectare lot, now is an opportunity to split again. If it's an acre. If you if we if the township goes to the acre. In in my opinion, so this is. It may happen to some. But I don't believe it'll happen ninety five percent of the time. Because right now, as we're taking a hectare off of a piece of property. At what is it, seventy meters? And and we're changing to an acre for forty five meters. And mostly people take the bare minimum of road frontage. You can't get two lots off a hectare because you have about this little ninety meters to chip away and break it into two lots.
Or just or just the front is going to be combined on it. So that that in itself will allow for greater lot tradition potentially. You don't have to create this large of a lot.
Yeah, but I thought I thought I read in in your papers that. Uh, there was a chance to subdivide, subdivide uh hectare lots that are already have our own seven. Then you could break them into two lots. But then I read that or something.
We you could. The idea is that if you like right now, you have to create a lot based on hectare.
Yeah.
And so if you have a big lot, you could create a seven.
But how can you whenever that?
Because because that's.
In our in our current, the current frontage right now is seventy.
Seven seventy meters. So it's going to be adjusted.
We're going to have to clean the zone in my adjusted area and.
Understand, in the acre lot and way the law is just, but you're going to adjust it to forty five meters, right? Okay, so the hectare lot has taken the 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 minimum frontage as required, and now it's seventy meters, right?
I I I see you're going. But but if we can actually.
No, no, I I I know that, and I know that, but I guess you just think that some majority of those eight of those hectare lots. That are centered at seventy meter frontage, but the full amount is required. You cannot split. That you cannot take an acre off of the two, the two point two, because you don't have nine.
And we're assuming that that hectare lot has a minimum of seventy, it might have more.
We thought something.
And we lost blocks that people have lots of, so that they couldn't be providing hectare rental, but they didn't want to. Does the game change because it enables for further loss creation opportunities? It might be a new county, the only current rate in your version plan will allow for rural estate lots subdivisions. And so this change would also apply to that, which would include. The potential for lot creation, which would be some regular rural estate lot. On so I leave the lots or divide first.
And and it's, I appreciate that's a good introduction to something that I was, you know, I, you know, I, you know, a. You know, I've been here a number of years, but you know, I, you know, I hail from Canada originally. And whenever somebody talks subdivision to me, it was always fifty, hundred, two hundred more homes kind of thing like that. So in a state subdivision, I'm saying, so you could you could theoretically use an estate subdivision to make four lots instead of the two lots that is by.
But you could you could do rural subdivisions where five were not permitted. And certainly this is how the eastern Ontario, I don't know. I don't think more than allows it. Um, there are others in eastern Ontario that don't allow, so in fact, you are still permitted. To allow, or it's still their original plan, and others still commits. State block subdivision in the rural area is a huge opportunity. And by reducing a lot area down to one acre, I think that just makes the balance more attractive. Uh, to a really dollar. And we think that that in large part will feel a bit interrupt in creating uh lots in the rural area. It's not fifty seven, but it's also a standard.
Yeah, and I guess I get into the how much does that cost? And because, you know, to your point, for 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 somebody before. Nobody's going to touch that. It's going to make it a little bit viable. So I don't know what the number is that makes it a politically viable.
Yeah, it's uh, again, it's. A number of facts, but subdivisions are a mistake. But but. Know that those are potential. And.
Making a good question.
Steven, the one acre subdivisions in a rural property that has no water and no silver?
Certainly possible.
Never heard of it. Do you want it? But they're always, they're always two acres. I always thought aren't two acres.
Uh, so. For example, southern brown, they have um. There are rural subdivisions where average lot size of there, I suppose there would be an acre starting with. And on configuration, but they are always.
And I understand that, I understand.
I'm here to be permitted to have an acre size, doesn't mean you didn't.
Uh, and and one one last question, and this is going to be pretty quick. The whenever you Google the the lots. Or whenever the town sent the intervention. Was any of the lending bank properties, first of speed. Dave. How does the products pay for their grant in lieu of for the? Lending properties, do they have individual? Uh, uh, you know, on individual tax bills or how does that work?
Yeah, but.
Name and blue line. If if we receive. And to what degree, I I I don't have.
The answer is in our folder, we eliminated. Property, property.
Okay, well, that's perfect, because there's lots of those. Thank you.
I have one question. So, um, Steve, do we consider? So one of the reasons that that we went with four instead of three. Was a a conversation that I had with Mayor Hugumbum. Um, a Rita Lakes. And their, um, you know, newest iteration of their. Official plan was done in February of this year. And they do a four, they do three severances plus the original lots, they do four. And their uh lot size is point four hectares, one acre. And there's no hydro G study or anything required through theirs. Their only one, their only comment is. The consideration may be given to a smaller minimum lot size under special conditions. Such conditions include, for example, a sit- situation where use of a tertiary sewage system. Treatment system or communal services is proposed or where hydro hydrologic, sorry, I need my glasses. Hydrology and terrain analysis has demonstrated adequate water supply on appropriate soils for a new set of system. In some cases, a larger minimum lot size shall be required depending upon the proposed use, spot with these areas. And other relevant conditions, but it doesn't demand it for point four hectare hectares and up, only for point four and below. And that's February of this year, that's an approved. Official plan for Rita Lakes through the United Counties. So have you had time to review that?
We're not reviewing that now, pretty people, but if you took it a little more with. Um, they were had to do a analysis of their last five and their. Hopefully different. Um, so that would be the adjustment to their. Same part, there are a lot of different policies. Um, but the hydro G, I haven't looked at it in detail, but however, it was on a basis that they had. Similar policies, so it would be not. Maybe, um, I I have to review most of this.
Yeah, sure. So but it makes sense for the smaller to have that attached to it. I think we all agree on that. Anything that that's. In a rural area, like whether it's for a tiny home or whatever the circumstance may be. That a hydro G, like I think we all agree on that, anything smaller than point four, I think it's just. Uh, from the point four to the one, I think is where we're having. Well, I think, but you know, in reading this, if if it's not in there. Like, I think we need to put it in there, I guess is what I'm saying, if there is a consideration for it. We just did it, right? Like, we we just did, like, that's what our severance was before for the point three. So if we actually added that in, then it would save a step for somebody else, would it not? So the severance we did on six point one, like to. Like tonight, oh, right, was for point three. The reason we had to have the the special, the public meeting and everything is because it's not considered as part of our amendment. Or it's not considered in our official plan. But if we added this clause that I just read. If we added that to what we asked for approval for. We wouldn't have had to have what we did tonight, right? If they would have just had to have done the study. And then it would have been okay.
Um, frankly, we're leaving a little bit. I mean, I'm sure that I don't know the details of that application, but um.
Right, it's fine, it's fine. Right, okay.
So, uh, any other questions?
Was there a recommendation?
Yeah.
Turns up number two. I don't get the sense that we're there. Do you share?
I I I don't even know. I I think, uh, uh, you know, I I think we're stuck on a few things, I, you know, I mean, the, uh. You know, to to the point of points, um, you know, I think it lets me come up with. Justification that that. I I think we need to figure out the justification that we we think exists for number one. Um, which would be the, what did our ask, small lot sizes. Uh, more lot numbers on there and the date change, um. Uh, but by any conversation behind your, I do geological study. Uh, I think, uh, you know, I mean, I don't know, but my personal thought is I don't think we got, uh. Uh, clear picture of how we would accomplish, yeah, what we're having that with. Another idea, I don't know, but it doesn't come up yet.
Well, if, um, Rita Lakes has done it. They obviously had to have some planning rationale to be allowed to do it. Right? I mean, you're saying if we just choose number one and we send it through, it'll fail.
I I I would be.
So so what would make sense to me then would be that Rita Lakes has a different planning rationale than what we have.
But they're really based on their loss supply, their development trends, accountability, permission, each year, and maybe their ability to be the on lots. Therefore, they come to the conclusion that based on. Our current supply, we need more lots. In our analysis for this. Lots of lots, you don't have enough building permits. So that's that's why I have a justification to create a lot, we can create a supply of no need.
And I think that's where it's going to go, Mr. Mary.
You know, cheaper lots as opposed to. Well, not necessarily, but well, I think a a a one acre lot is cheaper than a three acre lot. And and I think when we knock doors and we talk to people who didn't want to buy three acres, but were forced to buy three acres. You know, I think that that's a good right comment for me.
Yeah, we've had, we've had people who visited us for severance as well, who had to go to the two point of they go on here as well.
So if I can, Chair.
Yeah, I just actually was, when we, you want to add as a. Yep.
Um, the the town's report says, as I'm getting what this is called, I remember that was the education. And this is part of my county, some county, some county, Rita Lakes, official plan update. But I had an initial law, I can say, right before comes out from the regional land, we. This policy changes were empty by planning reports to support the entry. Cities and towns that we've got completed an analysis of the expected existing supply and demand for lots in township. It is determined, adding additional consent at this time was a rotation of level contact. Well, if they anticipate a demand for lots in township over the next ten, fifteen years. So if they had a demand for lots. That was a reader in the last thing I have available, right?
Over fifteen years, though, do you have the numbers of what were what were the creative numbers? Because I I would think that one could easily make the argument that nobody expected Kemphill to go from four thousand five hundred people to twenty two thousand people. Uh, in a matter of, what, ten years? So three hundred lots isn't isn't going to cut if that's the case. So I think. It actually, while it may seem like a lot of a lot of lots for a long term plan, it makes sense to me that you would actually have that.
I don't have numbers that Rita Lakes. Yes, to that.
See another question? Actually, when you just, the CDC actually answered it, because it was, my question was, would it not make sense for staff to engage Rita Lake staff? To find out what the planning justifications were and. You sort of. Uh, for it to ask. I I just don't know where to go, because I have two suggestions. One is, is I really like the conditions maybe given to a smaller lot size and special conditions. Um, I'm thinking of, you know, in the instance where there's tiny homes or something that can adequately show that they could provide. Services, three lots that come to mind instantly for me are the ones off of. Uh, Gallup Canal Road in Cardinal that currently has a tiny home that I think the township only one time we sold them. Off. Everybody's looking down, nobody's nodding at me. Uh, Gallup Canal Road left of the bridge, not where the floating houses are. So there was three lots there, there's a camper on one of them. It was a tiny home on one of them. They're all deemed too small to be built on, and they all have development on them. Whether it's legal or not, I'm not sure, but they're great examples of where. If if they've shown that it can't be done.
Down the river.
That that, you know. With the right assessments, maybe we would actually make. So having that in them, it makes. So.
Sir, if there's a specific site that, um. That we're concerned about, or that this is relevant to, there is still an option for an additional amendment, if you guys specifically say, like, if the, um, um. If the landscape or the situation for that lot is different from the rest of the township, it may not be. Uh, an official plan to allow all lots created outside, but maybe. Um, just that lot that mostly people got, and you have to provide an official plan to allow the smaller lots.
Right, but if we can. Okay, um, so could they also, in that same term? Come to council and admit this, but I, you know, I have people by, by. And the counties at the end of the day, but could they not do that same justification and try and sever off three properties instead of the number one? Are they allowed to do that as as part of a? Change for us.
I would say so if our initial plan and then they.
Sure.
Nation or not, whether or not that would be approved by the county, so it would be approved.
But it would be so simple as a.
So my my suggestion, if I can, Chair, is is that is that we look at. What it says in Rita Lakes, five point two point one, under general policies on A, it's on page one oh one of their official plan. And that and that we include the special. And that, and that we include the special conditions, if we're going to do an official plan amendment. And we're going to ask for point four. Why don't we consider? What it, what it says for those smaller lots, so that people don't have to come back again and go through more levels of. Official plan amendments and making things more difficult. If we just include it there, then they'll, they'll just have to come in and apply and get. The, you know, hydrological or terrain studies, uh, and prove that there's adequate waters. Like. To me, it would make more sense to just include that in the official plan amendment now, so that they, if they want to do it, they don't have to go through all of it. So that way anyone can do it, not just the three that I named. That that was, I shouldn't have named them, I apologize, but it's the spot that came up in my head. That's my, is that that you should take into consideration smaller lots than point four hectares when we're doing this official plan. They've done it in theirs. See no reason why we can't do anything.
So that's, that's a new change, right? That wasn't what we asked for, that's fair. Um. New information comes out. Uh, so. We, I don't think we're ready to do any of these recommendations at this point in time today. I think it's under the need more discussion. Uh, well, do you have an idea? We we just had another thing added to the table, so. Uh, I I will put on the floor that I would. I would take an amendment one, run of the, and send it off to the counties. I like amendment one. That's just, just me.
I guess. I would like to run with number one, too. But if the, but the planet cannot support number one. It it it's useless. But what I do think is we should move forward. With the one acre, wow, you're the counties, you're, you're, I mean, you're, 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 you, you guys are the voters. But I would, I would suggest you move ahead with the one acre law. Without any hydro G study, and then after that, the mayor says.
Yeah.
That less than one four a a hectares, you need, you need a hydro G study. I would not, I would not need that long in mind. You know, is it eight, it's a B or two, whatever it's thought, that's what I did, so.
Okay.
Mr. C, I just, sorry, Mr. C, who has it? You're good, sure.
Okay, sounds good. So, uh, at, uh, seven forty five P M, we're going to call five minute recess. Uh, thank you very much.
Hey, um, all right, we can be in this meeting at, uh, uh, seven fifty two P M. Um, okay, uh, the side of our conversation there, so is there anything important in that conversation or?
The thing, uh, what what are the, we want to sort of, um, by, it seems to be, um. So running this with respect to the recommendation, recommendation number two, it appears like the stipending point, uh, is the. Uh, is automating the requirement for a harder G before, um. Uh, on on your that, um, one actor, I think to the point, uh, point four. Uh, an option, uh, that, you know, appears that possibly is in the official things that. Uh, separate policy, uh, the the knowledge where it's specified. Uh, if in those circumstances, when, uh, a hard G would be perfectly required, so that could be the knowledge you want back. Also, so when when automatically we have this requirement for for good outside, automatically, that would be. A criteria that, that, in in service, where it's, it's certainly getting worried, uh, the need for.
The sidebar, it's the exact sidebar I was just having with fun about, you know, like, there is a a source water protection area in. In Spencerville, there's one, uh, along the highway two in Cardinal, and it makes perfect sense, right? In those instances, um, that, you know, that that those studies, to me, may, you know, a hundred percent sense. Or sensitive areas like marshlands or or woodlands and, you know, stuff like that. I mean, those, those instances make a hundred percent, I I can support, you know, that idea. You know, of of listing, you know, limitations to to that, but not requiring it if if it meets the criteria. Think that that makes sense. Okay, so, uh, other thoughts?
Who's going to make the call? When, who's the person who makes the call? If a hydro G is required.
We do.
We do. Through, through, through the chair, these would be the, uh, policy.
We create a clause.
We created the.
Those happens, it is.
Yes. That's a good company. Um, one, one more point, though, okay? If I can, when, but I think that, but I'm sorry, C A O, I think that, yeah. But I just, in reading, in reading that, I can't help but think that we might be missing something in the smaller lot size, especially if. Especially if there are, there are right now, but we're talking ten and fifteen years. And if tiny homes and smaller lots continue to be an issue, the growth of Kemphill, we've seen it get to a point of where where it is. Why, why, why force ourselves to go through another amendment of our official plan when we can? Put that, you know, basically copy what this, what this says about, you know, consideration maybe given to. To a smaller minimum lot size under s- under special cer- special conditions. They may still turn it down, because as the planner says, we. Um, have adequate lots by for right now, but, you know, if it's ten to fifteen year document, why not, why not throw it in there and see if, see if it works?
Sounds, that sounds better. You know, they've already done it, I did to the mayor's book, so. I I don't think it's a possibility.
But I.
No, we just need to keep in mind our goal is always to make it. Easier and easier for us.
Yes.
And you see, that starts to.
So if we were to go with variation two, um, with, uh, with basically a new, uh, new, uh, document created, new policy created, uh. Uh, for, you know, under point four hectares, um, sorry, smaller lots, I was going to say in general. Um, but to you guys, we do say point four hectares in the recommendation, right, for, uh, recreation or two. So. If we're to go with that, um. The under four. Under point four, pardon me. Uh, and then we created the rules that included under point four acres as well, um, as part of our subset of that, of that policy. Does that, is a recommendation worth for today, or do we need to go back and some, uh, some rewrite on that?
You understand the question? Creating lots under. The final rate allows for the creation of lot under forty four. Uh, getting service circumstance like in Southern there is. So that, that's a different context than what we're talking about creating real lots. So I, I think the policy already did, I think. The threshold is. The minimum should be quite four. And whether. The, uh, C A O is suggesting this. Revising number two, to go with. All right. What what is the fact here? How do you know, and so that should be required? So it's, uh, black and white. It's a little expression. And I've heard that awesome.
Question, so, yeah. So, so if under that, under that, I think I can get my, I think I might get what I want here. Uh, under that policy. And that could, could it be worded that that consideration may be given to a smaller minimum lot size under s- special conditions? Could that be worded in, in that policy, or does it have to be?
I would think that there wouldn't be a. Where you would be under one four. Where you would not automatically.
Were you a not automatic?
If you're, if you're that small of a lot.
Sure.
You, it could be, you could just be automatic.
That's, I have no problem, I have no.
So like, but like, to me, I I think. Yes, and if there is something under. It can become fireworks under the. Uh, and to, you know, if he gets, if he gets to consider, it would be. Management.
Yeah, I'm fine with management.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that it gets written in. Yeah, I think.
Because it's deeper, that's what they require, there's bones by law, and you can use that. Lots of. Right?
Or you don't.
You only have to establish the minimum off. What I'm saying is that if a rural area, the lot that serves by private, where on the water, where on the subject. That may look point four, but. And the question is whether or not there should be any need for a hydro geology for that. Create a lot under point four. Should only be referring to that. Private, because we're, you know, the water, and so.
But in in fairness. And I know.
That's town.
Rita Lakes doesn't have water and sewer.
But I guess we can really relate the policies specifically to that. If I need to read the plan, it was in Ken. The. Policies, depending on the time of day, across people are policies, so. I can't say, but if if you're saying that they will allow a lot creation under acre on private services. I think I'd be surprised by that.
Page one oh, page one oh one of their official plan, five point two point one.
We'll, we'll look at it and say, but.
Okay.
We can guess.
So we need to. And back.
Well, that's, I mean, I'd love to not come back, but I don't know if we're okay with saying. Uh, number two, recommendation number two. Removing the, um. Removing or advising. Or, so we don't have the, we don't have the policy written, so it's really hard to refer to the policy, it's not written, assuming, do you have any ideas of how we could? Formulate, upending this recommendation to account for that for tonight? Or is it a comeback again, so?
Well, I think, um, that is the chair, I guess. There, there will be no way that we can. Put together a. Then it's sort of a. The criteria for when I really would be. Required. Night. It would be something.
Sure. I just, would, can we have a recommendation that would word around that? And I don't think it makes sense.
If, 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 if there isn't a proper.
That's on the table, too. Yeah, that's right. I think you've heard of the discussion, I think you. Know what. Generally speaking, what, what the group. Wants. Everybody's fallen to it. You.
Come for that statement, too?
I I I would say through the chair. The assigned certification. These years, I've lost. We don't want to. If you're through that process, that. Uh, the only thing that, that. Point, that's all. After the lot being created, then it will be behind the chain plus thirty eight, fifty or, uh, criteria. And say it only be four. And that criteria would be. I think of the first thing. How, how we change, when we gain. See that. As well. And I thought I'd be, I think it's clear, I, I, I'm, I'm.
We're, we're, we're. We're back. Yeah, so. It would be a comeback and and, uh. With with an amended option, uh, action to, let's say, to the talks to, is that so?
When? Yeah, I guess that was first going to win and option two. I meant like.
So.
So I guess the chair. If last summer they captured. What the committee was up.
Not what I was expecting. You know, anybody else have any, uh, statements on that? I just want, yeah, I'll say, I, I, uh, I want option one. I don't want option amendment two, I want amendment one. And for that point four. Under anything at a point four, we have to have. But I want amendment one, that's just me.
But I, I think, I think in in fairness, I I tend to agree with. With with the deputy mayor, I mean, if option one was presented in front of me, I would choose it. Um, however, I understand the need to, to add add the policy so that it outlines areas like. You know, drinking water protection areas and things like that, because quite honestly, we have to happen in those instances anyways, we'd be crazy not to put it, so. Um. But I'd like to see, I'd like to see an option. We can always go back to one, but I I would like to see a revised option of number two. And 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 that revised option for number two, I would hope that would include through the possibility of something that was under that point four. But, sure, likelihood may not happen, maybe there's very few, uh, instances, but I I can name a couple. And instead of requiring them to do, um, you know, specific amendments, let's just make it, make it open and available for everybody to see, we'll save some more.
Okay. So, yeah. Good, yes. Yes, so. Always operating. From, from, from the start. You will not see this, uh, like meditation. That includes all the criteria. It does. From a, from a, from an advisory standpoint. I don't think that's what it was. But as we learn with respect to the roles and responsibilities. Staff is free, make the recommendation, and council is, it is, is free to choose. All we want to make sure is that council is fully aware of what they're choosing. That they have the power of the English. We're, we're trying to prevent, we're trying to present, of the information, it is, it is not, it's not a debate. Yes, you, but I'm saying that it, it's, there, there are no such waiting a lot, so I can say one recommendation number one. And expecting that the staff is wanting to present a recommendation. We will modify recommendation number two, which are the best, we'll be achieving what we want to achieve. But I'm just, I'm, I'm just.
So.
Really, Chair, well. Why did you give me an amendment on that? Please. Yeah.
That would be a number you really want. If you wanted to.
Afraid to do so.
You're afraid to do so.
What, what?
We're saying that it is with that stuff.
It's that's the point.
That's.
And so, so we only have information of of our planner and and Noah Tech is their planner, and and that's fantastic. But if we show you that there's somebody else, one of our neighbors that's doing this. Why don't we, why don't we actually take the time then to have a conversation with them? So that we find out why and how they actually were able to do it. It's, it's great. I think Stephen Jordan do a fantastic job. But if they found a way to do it that is supportable by their, by their staff, and they can actually get it done, why are we getting so much pushback against, against that? Like, I would, I would sense that we should actually, like, in my eyes, I would. I would be thinking to myself, okay, well, maybe I want to have a conversation with Rita Lakes and find out what they used for for planning rationale, so that maybe we can get this done. Because the words were, we're not going to support this, but yet it's exactly what Rita Lakes has written in their policy.
So. I, I think, sort of, there you can hear, that you come, I have to, like. You know, not presented recommendation one, which is exactly what the committee wanted. All we're saying is that you're not going to, you're not going to have a recommendation saying that staff is. All we're saying is that you're not going to, you're not going to add a recommendation saying that staff is recommending in favor of that option. Or recommending in favor of another option based on professional advice in 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 the field. We're not, we're, in all fairness, we're not always going to affect really on uh.
It's pretty important though to have your support. That's, this amendment's really important to have staff on their side to work. Their butt off to get this done. When we don't have your support, it sure makes it tough to uh. To say yes, I I I like the member one, and I do like the member, that's what I want. But then I don't have the support of staff, that's a, that's a tough. It's a real tough one. And I I want this township grown, and I talked enough people that and contractors that want to want it reduced. And and lot size and the smaller frontage and more, uh so I'm sorry. I I mean, I guess, yes. You're not with us, that's fine, that's my thing, I'm only one. And we'll have to bring something up, I guess, at the next meeting for amendment two.
Uh at the future meeting. Well, ideally. But that mean you mean next week meeting or next?
No, no, C B C, ideally it's a C C meeting, but it doesn't.
In October.
Five months until, so another month's not gonna hurt us, you know, and we're not even. Okay, we're right at the top.
I I, you know, I agree to say we're. That uh.
Yeah.
Uh amendment number one is preferred, I suspect whatever council member is here.
Definitely we are.
But I know that he's able to. Different changes, but I think we we need to listen a little bit to the mayor when he's saying. If Rita Lakes has got a new official plan and they've been able to do it, I really think we need to follow up with the Rita Lakes staff. And. No decision set. But. You may want to just. Find out who their planner was that was able to push this through. Not just to push it through. But find.
Okay, uh. So. Uh we'd like to look at number two with those applications. It sounds like we'd also like to see a little bit more data. Uh what happened in, well, at least, uh at least we go, you know, it's. Uh on how they were able to justify everybody got through, or that our situation, that first statement. Counsel. Okay, um and otherwise we'll defer till um. Is next meeting too late, too soon?
Yeah, we'll uh look at the time asking.
Okay. Okay, uh right then. Uh okay, so moving on to action number four. Site plan control by law updates. Yep, yep, it's okay.
So. So this is on the management review and update inside of the law, who's gonna be there this year and allow.
Thank, thanks Stephen Jordan.
Uh okay, probably please, when the action demand to. Um back in April, the draft by law was prepared to update the things by the control. Um and the draft appropriated changes to the policy made the bill twenty-three. Uh maybe read that draft by law and recommended it without community council. But just days later, after our meeting, um it's really, I mean, it's over the house. Um sharing that they received feedback municipalities and other stakeholders that site plan control. Was actually a really useful tool to address land and housing matters, particularly for lands adjacent to railways and natural areas. Um so in response for feedback received, change was proposed on April sixth through bill ninety-seven to allow site plan control. To be used in these specific circumstances while maintaining an overall exemption for residential development. For ten or fewer units. Um so we anticipated a likely change to our proposed new site plan control by law. Um it wasn't adopted by council yet, so um. While these changes were under review, we we could see how that would play out and. Bill ninety-seven is now in effect in section forty-one of the planning act. Does allow the use of site plan control where ten or fewer residential units are proposed. If the site is within the prescribed period, so on their regulation, it's written in four to twenty-three. Um defines that prescribed period is that these uh residential developments. It is uh located within nine twenty meters of a wetland based on river. Uh or any part of land which is located within three hundred meters of a railway line. We look at our official plan, uh those changes to the planning acts are consistent with our official plan. It's uh it allows us to implement. Um recommendations from environmental impact studying if it's here or up in Denver, it recommends mitigation measures. The uh that what then equalize the functions for um. If uh noise in our bridge to study was needed for development. Uh opposed to uh railway, then um uh using site plan control, we could implement recommendations. But from that engineer's study, so um I've updated the site plan control by law. Um it's a major package and changes that I uh made are in in.
They're just the two sections, uh one point five for the rail railway lines and two point two. Uh regarding the uh three hundred meters of rail lines, I guess, or minutes. And that's the only additions, so I mean, I suspect our conversations will be primarily about that, but I guess uh any other conversations that came up, I guess. So on that note, any comments, anybody? Yes.
Right to move the recommendation.
Also, okay. Any any comments at all, any objections, or we just like to see, I guess, it sounded like. Okay, well. Some were easier than others, I guess, uh let's call it two of them, so all in favor. You know, it's. It's easy, all right, moving on to six uh A five. Action, tree canopy and natural vegetation policy. I suspect this will take a little longer.
I think Mr. Chair, so uh gave us a third time in front of uh. Maybe based on the discussion at the at that last meeting. Doc had incorporated the uh the changes that. Basically, the main point was uh.
Thank you, I'd like to compliment staff on uh on the revisions and the uh and the the track changes, I guess, to the to the policy. I think it certainly reflects exactly what was discussed by committee. And and I think it, you know, accurately reflects it, and I think a a very good job was done. Well, still to preserve and. The policy, so thank you for those those changes and I I'm happy to move this recommendation as as. Uh okay, so it's good, uh any other comments? I I don't know, um. Deputy Mayor, you're okay?
Yeah, I kind of like you going, well, yeah, I'm good with it.
I I keep coming back to, you know, uh well, five point one and work towards improvements, and I I keep trying to figure out. Are we in some sort of an area that I don't realize in this in our township in relation to the rest of the area of the world? Where we have a tree canopy problem, because I I keep wondering why would regular groups of them, I don't know that we're needing improvement, I guess, unless there's. Some data there to say that that that's not the case, so. I don't know, is that just because we're? Is that a copy and paste from others, or is that something we're trying to strive for, and if that if that's the case, what's the goal, I guess, would be the next question I have.
What we're saying is is keeping. And I'm treating uh. Uh when we're doing the work, that's potentially doing the number three in the majority. She can at least monitor the sort of thing, you know, maybe we should plant two or three. Uh you you know, where where we're talking at twenty, maybe we should be planting two or three. You know, back in that area, and that would be certainly an improvement on potentially that practice where we remove them. We didn't didn't give it a second thought, I I I would certainly say that uh in the township, there is a. There's a reasonable tree canopy that exists. It left, uh you you know that whole same with respect to trees, but I think you would plant a tree probably like twenty years, twenty years ago. So I'm gonna plant one now, I think it's just.
Yeah, I I just hear like.
You know, as far as saying that. I I I would enjoy that that efficient, it's just like.
I guess, because when I look at it, it says, you know, then maintain healthy tree canopy levels. As far as I'm concerned, but a period right there, that's the end of that sentence, and that's the only thing that I really have, that is. No, uh. Finally, it'd be a little bit, I guess, it was, you know, just, but you know, I I guess if there's no goal for improvements, it's really hard to look looking for it. It's fuzzy, but I just, I just, you know, nod me a little bit. Seems like that's uh amazing, so so good, so it sounds like we have a mover, anybody have a second visit? Uh seconded by Deputy Mayor Delba, uh so all in favor? Okay, excellent. Uh so that's that, um moving on to six B, work in economic development, we have nothing on the agenda. Six C, plant recreation, also nothing on the agenda. Uh so on to number seven, which is improving their notices of motion.
I'd just like to uh big shout out to the uh I know. Festival many, there's the Labor Day uh parade and all the functions that were down on. River. Um and staff were being there then to uh pick up our. Garbage, it was well done, um it's great to see our township, I've never seen so many vehicles actually down. In years on the river uh after the parade, so. Uh a big shout out to them and hopefully our great township will come together. This weekend for the festival fair and do the same thing all over again. Because it was well, kind of did a bang up job, and I'm sure that the uh festival fair will do a bang up job.
We should actually uh increase the rate of the general comments. Because we always have these nice ones up as well. Anybody else?
Yeah, mine is not an inquiry. But mine is a compliment to to the recreation staff. Um and to our public work staff who dealt with, you know, the the forest rain break. This weekend, working coming in on a Monday, you're doing, it was six hours waiting for locates, they spent a good portion of their holiday Monday. Uh fixing a rather uh. A difficult situation, so thank you, you can express that to the environmental. Services and public works folks and to the recreation staff for the fantastic job. Uh they did uh around, you know, Legion Way and. The term of waterfront, uh certainly one of the things, as the deputy mayor said, the uh. The festival committee, the many uh folks that gave up their time and volunteered, but most of all, I think uh our our residents showed up. And and if you're anywhere near our waterfront, it it was absolutely booming. It brings us back to, you know, the days of old, what it was like, and I've heard so many times over the last five years. That we need more, we need more, we need more, well, you saw it this weekend, and it's all when the weather, good volunteers, great. Everything comes together, it's fantastic, so uh well done to all for that. The other one, and I just real quick, um I think all members of council went uh to Prescott for the. Brand opening and the ribbon cutting of of the new uh Elaine Shertran. Uh community center. Um and just want to compliment and say congratulations to. To the folks in Prescott, fan fantastic, uh fantastic job there. And and I guess lastly, um on a personal note to to our clerk who's not here tonight, congratulations on her wedding.
Well, clearly I should try and speak first, now so I got my points across, Mr. Mayor for covering the last, so the deputy mayor do this deal for me. Uh anyways, that was great to see everybody out there, it was really nice to see. People just come out, it was a great community event and uh. You know, it makes you really happy to know that the work that that the staff is doing is paying off, so I agree with that.
Everybody's doing share there, so we want our deputy mayor pushing us to put that vote together.
That was kind of was. See us again next week.
On the way out, I'm like, wow, talk to this driver here.
It's too bad, I need to go to the sound phone, I was looking to put a vote together. Because I might have tried and a newer spreader that I could have put in.
Alright, so. Alright, alright, alright. So moving on to number eight, question period, we do have somebody uh with no questions, and we. Alright, that's good, uh we're in a red closed session, we do not have anything on the closed session agenda. So moving on to number ten, uh and they need.